So I will open the meeting. Good evening and welcome to the March 18th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. For all present, let's spend a few minutes reviewing how this meeting will be conducted. For the first two hours prior to 9:30 PM, we shall hold a public hearing on the applications that you received a notice on and that were listed in the Norwalk hour for hearing. After the application is announced by the chair and read by the secretary, the applicant will come forward and identify themselves, state his or her name for the record, and then present the appeal or relief being sought. Please present those zoning issues that are relevant, excuse me, to the practical difficulties or hardship requiring this application. After you or your representative has spoken, those in favor will have the chance to be heard. After that segment, those against the application will have the opportunity, opportunity to state their opposition for the record. In the case of an appeal, the zoning staff will have the opportunity to present their final findings. Finally, after those against the application have spoken, the applicant and only the applicant will have the opportunity to rebut and respond to the issues raised. The hearing is then closed and the next application called. New applications will not normally be heard after 9:30 PM as the board must discuss and act upon these applications. Please note that no further public input is accepted at that time. You are welcome to stay for this portion of tonight's meeting, but should you decide to leave, you may contact the zoning office tomorrow to learn about our decision. Before we proceed, I must remind you that this hearing is recorded and will become a matter of permanent public record. So the meeting being opened, Mr. Secretary, will you read the first item on our agenda tonight?
I'm just making sure I've got the right thing in front of me.
We get the roll call?
The roll call. Lee Levy, Marilyn Altman, Ted Diesel, Andy Conroy, and Keith Lyon are present for tonight's meeting.
Everybody?
Yes?
Okay. 2102 1801 continued 490 Westport Avenue. Variance for setbacks and there are several side yard 30 foot required, four foot proposed, aggregate side 30 foot or proposed rear yard. Did somebody say that? Input required, 4.7 proposed building area. Buildings 50% maximum, 58.3 proposed buildings and parking 80% maximum, 83.2 proposed. Open space 20% maximum, minimum rather, 16.8 proposed. Buffer strip 15.5 required, four proposed. Were two outdoor paddle carts. Section 118522C, 118, 1000F, and 118, 1000G in business number two zone. The property located 490 Westport Avenue, District 5, Block 8, Lot 41. The applicant seeks a variance for regulations of setback slot coverage, open space buffer strip to construct two paddle courts in the southern portion of the property. Background, the existing business is a membership fitness club with indoor only space for tennis and other fitness activities. Analysis and findings of the staff, although the existing structure has made good use of the parcel, the lot shape and existing building configuration could be considered a hardship for the addition of outdoor paddle courts. That completes it. We've received and Tammy had them. She can make sure that everybody has received and understands that each of the messages, some in support, additional support messages. Tammy, you have those available?
We only had the letter from the Norwalk Chamber, Brian Griffin, who gave his.
Yeah, I thought we had an email or two that was sort of like a long roll of people that were.
Oh, for the, so Northwest condominium association, they provided a letter just very recently. I haven't even reviewed it. It just came through of an agreement and that probably.
Let's take a minute and pull the letter up and take a look at it. I think it's important to stop right now and get that.
I would agree that that should be an important part of our record.
I know I just saw these things come through an email just before I signed on, so. There certainly isn't, no one was being slapped here. It just didn't show up until recently.
That is correct, Mr. Conroy. It was, it was just received and sent this evening by Northwest at 6:16 to staff, so I'm happy to read that to you if you would like or send it to someone directly if that's helpful. I have a copy here.
Well, let's, let's see first if Tammy has it. If she doesn't, then yes, I'll accept that. Because I'm, you know, they better to come from her than you, but let's see.
I agree.
So I only have the, the one letter from Pelosi and Ryan, which they're the representatives for the condo association from Northwest. That's the one and only that I have.
Yeah, go ahead and send it to Tammy so she could read it.
All right.
Do you have Tammy's email?
No, no, I haven't. Andy, I'm sorry, I have it. I just have to open it up. Okay, so you want me to read it aloud?
Yep, please.
Okay, all right. So this is dated March 18th, 2021 to zoning board of appeals in care of Carmody, Torrance, Sandec, and Hennessy. All right. This office represents Northwest Association, Inc., its board of directors, and a number of individual unit owners collectively, the association. The association is the owner of real property that neighbors the rear of the property that is subject of the application. Requested variances, Sackett, Norwalk, 490 LLC, and Intensity Corporation applicants have applied for a number of variances seeking to build two outdoor paddle courts. One, the applicants request variance relief from the schedule limiting height and bulk of buildings, commercial and industrial city of Norwalk Part II in section 118, 1000G of the zoning regulations as stated in the attached application narrative to permit the construction of two outdoor paddle courts and related site improvements. And then he references application paragraph one. Number two requires southwesterly side yard where resident zone of butts equals 30. They recap all of the, all of the setback variances they're looking for. Applicants property, the application states that the subject property, property known as 490 Westport Ave, Norwalk. What's that? I'm sorry, did somebody say something? No, okay. The association property has an address of 80 County Street, Norwalk. The association is a condominium consisting of 133 residential units. The association property is directly to the rear of the subject property. There is a significant tree buffer located on the adjoining property and the association property. Statement of support of variance application. Since the initial presentation of the variance application, the applicants have worked closely with the association, its directors, and the interested unit owners. The parties have had numerous discussions to answer questions and address any concerns of the association. Subsequent to these discussions and a site visit by all interested parties, the association is confident that the granting of the variance application will not have any adverse effects to the association. Therefore, the association supports the variance application subject to the following express conditions. Number one, there will be no amplified noise of any nature. Number two, lighting shall be turned off by 10:15 PM each night. Number three, applicant shall install a wooden fence of 10 feet in height along the boundary line facing the association property. If approval of a 10-foot, 10-foot fence is not permitted by the ZBA, the fence shall be a minimum of eight feet in height. Conclusion, in conclusion, the association as neighboring property owner offers its full support of the applicant's variance application. Subject, those three conditions stay adherent. The association supports Norwalk local businesses and wishes the applicant success with these additional facilities. Northwest Association, Inc. by Franklin G. Pelosi Esquire, its attorney. They end.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
And we read into the record the last time, the letter from the Chamber of Commerce president.
Yes.
Okay, I'm not quite sure how to proceed at this point, but we'll find our way there. Do we have the representative for 490 with us tonight? Oh, Jaclyn, I'm sorry.
That's okay. How are you? I'm happy to start and just provide a brief summary for you where we are. We have several folks with us here on the screen. Charlie Mason, owner of Intensity Fitness. David Wright of Paragon, you can't see him here. He did not, he can't get on with his link was, he didn't have the correct link, but I have him here. I think he's watching or listening. Jason Klein, my colleague, David Gagnon of Langin Engineering, Chris Cass, I'm going to say this correctly, I hope, Cassarahi of Platform Tennis and Perry Chan or Sound Engineer. Chris was with us last time and certainly can answer any questions that you have about the construction of the, of the platform tennis courts that are being proposed or been a little bit about the sport itself. I know that we went in many different directions during our first hearing, but he is certainly a great resource and can answer many of these questions for you if you have any outstanding questions about that tonight. Someone we did not have on with us at the last time was Perry Chan, our, our sound engineer. And we had submitted this afternoon a copy of her sound report and she's here also to speak to those, those findings. But they, the conclusion of her report is that any of the sound that emanates from this proposal from the two outdoor paddle courts meets the Norwalk Noise Ordinance Regulation, the code. And this was important because although we didn't talk about it much as a board, we did have the opportunity to speak with our neighbors. They were terrific, engaged just immediately. We went out for a sidewalk in the snow in the back and just walked, walked through the plan together. That was of particular interest to them. So we thought that it was important to bring Perry on and to put her report into the record for your review as well. That certainly brought them much comfort and satisfaction. We since also, since then also spoke to the board in a Zoom format, much like this, and talked about a few things that would just make the, the proposed use more comfortable to them. And those were represented in the letter that you just read into the record, Mr. Conroy. And we, if the board finds that it wishes to approve this application, then we consent to, to those conditions being attached. There will be no noise amplification or any sound system associated with, with these courts. The facility closes at 10 o'clock currently. It will continue to close at 10 o'clock. And even though there are nights when we don't even anticipate play outside until that time, as soon as the play is completed for the day, the lights would be shut off or at 10 o'clock, by 10:15, all the lights will be off and we agreed to that as well. We will be installing a fence and I know we spoke to those materials. We are open to suggestions, if that's important to this board, about the materials. We proposed a, an opaque no-slat wood fence, which is good for sound absorption and can be maintained well and our neighbors are happy to look at that particular material. They've articulated to us, but if there are other ideas, we're open to them.
I'd actually like to ask Tammy a question. Is a 10-foot fence permitted in Norwalk?
Possibly. So anything above six feet requires a building permit and then there's a wind resistance test or something involved with that. So I don't believe we, I don't believe the building code restricts the height. It's just that it has to be safe.
So it has to be a fence that is structurally sound. Which is a good thing. I think we should also include in our, as part of our deliberations, a statement about maintaining the fence because several areas are possibly subject to damage from automobiles on the neighboring site. And I'd like to make sure that.
Along the southerly side?
Yes. I'd like to make sure that any damage is quickly repaired because sometimes these things tend to get neglected.
That's, that's a fine idea. And if there is a maintenance agreement form that the city of Norwalk would like to see, I know sometimes for planning and zoning, we will adhere to a landscape, fences fall under landscape maintenance agreements. If that's something that you would like to see filed with the zoning department, we are happy to do that. Or to, you know, put a note on the plan to your satisfaction. I think that's a very reasonable request. So those three conditions are fine and I think that we, whether it is eight, eight feet, 10 feet, we are open, open to whatever the, the building department will permit. And we can, we can have that discussion with that or accept the condition to that effect. There are a few other things that you asked, asked of us. And then I'd like to run through quickly the pictures from the PowerPoint that we provided last time and also show you a few updated slides that you had asked for. Jason, do you mind sharing our screen here? Okay, let's go quickly through the first few slides just to reorient us to the site. See, we have the star here, but we do have some additional aerials that were requested. This is our site here. Recall, oh, you can't see mine. Jason, you can use yours. I'm using my cursor. You know, you can't see mine. Here you can see our site. It is separated. Let's go to the, the street and see the strip. This is all located in the B2 zone. It's permitted zone. You see that the building was, was designed under light industrial standards as we just reviewed at a time where we had a more liberal, a more liberal zoning code here. And in the back, there is a triangular piece that's covered in green. And this is the location where the proposed courts will be located. You can see that there's this, that strip in between us that's located in the residential zone. But it is connected out to Route 1 to another B2 commercial piece and then the Northwest condos to the west. And we have another, and then we are surrounded on all other sides by commercial properties. And there are cross easements from our property onto some other neighboring properties as well.
Let me just ask, I know there was a question raised at the last meeting regarding the narrow strip of land to kind of the southeast of the site. Was any other information covered?
Yes. So Jason, why don't we just fast forward to those slides that we can see a little bit more of those pieces? Just so we have the visual as we speak to it. Now let's keep going. Yeah, that is the width of the strip. We see it's roughly 30 feet. Of courts. We'll come back to this good exhibit, but Jason, let's get this, let's go to the next one, please. And the next one, let's see. And then the next one. And we'll go back in reverse order here. So I think, Mr. Chairman, you had asked for an aerial so that you could see some of the surrounding areas. So you can see off of Westport Avenue, you can see this is all, Jason, if you can use your cursor for me as I, as I chat. This is all in the B2 zone. And then we come back here and where there's a green, the green strip to the west of the yellow line. This also is in the residential zone. You can see the full condos here and then Leanne Drive. And then directly to the south of our property, which you will zone in. Let's go, let's go back one slide. So we get in a little bit closer. You can see this here is the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond and movie lot, movie theater, parking lot, strip behind there as well. And then we can go in one more, Jason. And here you could see that even closer. And then if we go back to the strip photo, I think that's one. Thank you. So the, what we learned about the strip, we, there was no information available to us in, in the zoning records or in the testers' records about how, how the history of this map or how, how this strip came to be, where it comes from. What we did do is a rough calculation that if that were to be acquired, would we still need a variance? I think that was one of the questions. And the answer to that is yes, there is not enough area there to to obviate the need or to eliminate the need for for a variance. And I might also argue though, that it might be more, even if we did acquire that, we still, we still do have the residential line that's there and that, that creates a heightened setback because here in this zone, in the B2 zone, there is no side yard setback or aggregate side yard setback. And there's no buffer requirement when you abut another B2 zone. So while we have the luxury of that on the northwest side of the property, we don't have that on the southwest side of the property. Another unique feature that I think adds to the hardship argument, support for this argument. But because we are next to a residential zone and that's regardless of whether we obtain the strip or not. So this would apply whether we have the strip or don't have the strip. We have, we have these, we have an additional stranded side yard setback requirement here. And that does not go away if we obtain some of that property. Dave Gagnon, you're on the phone. Are you able to, to confirm how you made that conclusion?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Jackie. So we, we looked at that property and then we got the area of what that strip would be and we looked at how the impact would be to our proposed courts. And you know, as Jackie mentioned, we're still over on building coverage, so it's not enough area to help us with the building coverage. We still have the same issues with the setbacks. So we dug into the records. We, we pulled what they had, you know, from Town Hall and we weren't able to kind of move the needle by, by purchasing that little strip of land, unfortunately.
And then the other question that still remained for us is how that building that is on that piece of property came to be? And if eliminating this particular area for them throws them even more out of compliance? So you can see there that that property, it is also on the residential line and I don't believe meets some of those, some of those setbacks as well. We're not quite sure if it completely meets the area, but it was, right, Dave? I think you said that it was very, very close to potentially throwing that out of compliance without, without having a full benefit of a full survey.
Yeah, one thing to note is that little strip is probably 20% of that Jason property of 466. And that's all pretty much pervious. If you take that away from 466, I worry about that becoming not conforming because of coverage.
And Mr. Chairman, we took it a step further too. I did do a little case law research on this and certainly when one owns property, you know, currently owns property, the law could apply and protect go for variance by merging the properties to eliminate that need. Then in the event, there was an interesting case from 2005. It was a Superior Court case, was a Norwalk case. And that was the one where the in-purchased the adjacent, that was Stember v. Zoning Board of Appeals. And but there that, the in-purchased the adjacent parcel for the purposes of expanding that building. And the conclusion was that the uniqueness of the original parcel didn't justify a finding of hardship for variances to to extend the business zone boundary further. So it was interesting. I just, when I, when I read that conclusion, I thought even if we obtained this strip and while we minimized the variances, couldn't eliminate them either by the, the side yard or the coverage. This case seemed to, to be the most consistent with that, with that fact pattern. It doesn't, it doesn't really help solve the problem in any way. So we think that our initial, you know, claims for hardship still apply and are, I think, even, even further supported by the fact that we would not be able to obtain this strip. But I think what's important about this strip, both to our, to our neighbors and also to us and hopefully also to you, is that the spirit and intent of the regulation of the setback is still maintained. That strip is so narrow that really it doesn't do anyone any benefit except maybe to give particular coverage or area rights to the existing, to the existing owner. We, while we are asking for a variance to that strip, it will never be developed residentially. Probably is, is even potentially more valuable to, to our neighbors to the west than even to us. But that buffer will always remain. It is in the residential zone. It does enhance the, the distance between anything that can be back there and our neighbors at Northwest. And since we do have nearly 30 feet there, plus the four feet that we're, that we're asking for, we certainly meet the intent to the next occupied lot. So therefore, there's no, there's no, we conclude that there isn't a negative impact to the granting of this variance and that this lot is so unique and these pieces around it are so unique that it, that it meets that hardship standard. The same being true of the rear yard variance as well, that we do have a parking, a parking area here that again, very narrow and it, it serves the purpose of creating a buffer between that back commercial lot and then the closest next residential lot across that way.
Okay. I think that's pretty understandable at this point. I'd like to go a slightly different direction on my next question. Is the parking on-site proper for the use or is there an overabundance or a shortage of parking?
Yes. Why don't we go back to, David, will you answer that question for me? I know it's included on, on your plan.
Sure.
Jason, if you want to draw up that plan, that would be helpful.
Sure.
Under proposed.
So if you pull up our parking table, we do have an excess of parking. I think we're required 40 parking spaces. We have just over 50. So we have 54 proposed.
Okay. And how does that jive with the addition of the two proposed courts?
The, the 40 required spaces would be inclusive of, inclusive of the two additional courts.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members have questions of the applicant? Questions?
Before we conclude, I also wanted to share one additional exhibit that was prepared by Chris with regard to our lighting, just so that we're clear. We know we didn't get into this. If we can go to the image, this is the image here. The photometric plans have been refreshed since our last meeting and all confirmed that we have a 0% spillage beyond the property line. We thought that was also important given, given the neighboring uses and all of our lights are full cutoff. But Jason, can you go to that snazzy drone image? We were inspired by you at your last meeting on the, the Norwalk High drone images for lighting. And Chris produced this one as well. If you look very closely, you can see to at the, where the third court is, there's a parking lot there. You can barely see it because it's not illuminated. The light doesn't spill off of the courts because of the sophistication of the, the, the light enclosures. And we wanted to share this with you as well.
Okay, thank you.
Jason, could you just, just sit down? I just wanted to for the, to confirm to our neighbors about the conditions of approval. Well, here we have our conditions of approval. These are the three that they listed, but I wanted to include it in our deck so that they were, they confirmed that we brought them up tonight. And then for you for during your deliberations, we've listed out again our hardships. Unique lot shape, and it's not self-created, the narrow size and the change in zone. and the change in zone. And then also just some of the, the quick takeaways for your consideration. Lighting is full cutoff, noise fully compliant, decorative fencing to be installed. And as we discussed, to be confirmed with the building department as to height. The beautified backyard, health and wellness opportunity for the community. The buffered strip, which we think, and also the commercial parking lot, both of which offer these additional buffering standards and meet and exceed what the side yard setbacks otherwise would be. And then that the paddle courts are, are open and don't, don't add to, you know, that traditional building massing. And thank you very much for your time and your, the ability to return to you tonight with this additional information.
Okay, I'm going to add, Marilyn, you have a question? Unmute yourself. Marilyn, you have to unmute yourself.
It looks like she is unmuted, but her speaker is not, her microphone's not working.
Well, she was talking just before the meeting, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think you're okay in your computer setup, but for some reason, after you clicked on the mic, we still can't hear you.
Wave if you can hear us. Okay, but we can't hear you.
Yeah.
One moment.
Now we hear you. Whatever you did, it did it.
Okay. I think my only question is, is what happens if there is an issue with noise? Noise is a funny thing. You never know how many, you know, what the crowd will sound like. If there is an issue with noise, is there any recourse for the people at the condominium? Would there be?
We've, we've discussed this too, both with the condominiums and as a team. We, we have two courts here, which also beats that when you have more than two courts. You said with the crowd, we have, you know, maximum here of, you know, four people, for, you know, eight people out there and then potential transitions. The, our sound consultant observed another two-court location and full play just in this last week. And, and the sound and the distancing, certainly that extra distance between that strip helps it. We have also agreed to provide some mitigation on their side, on Northwest's side. And that could include either a fence, we're making a contribution to them in a private agreement. As for either a fence or for evergreen planting, whatever they would like. So that will actually provide additional noise barrier as well. And we'll be doing, as part of Perry's package, she does follow-up checks to ensure that her, her report is consistent with, consistent with the actual play. And one other thing that I think is really the most important here is that Mr. Mason is a, is a local owner. He is there and on-site every day. He's, he's now met with the condominiums. He has, they have an open line of communication. If something happens, they can go directly to him to help manage and solve that problem. He's been a part of the Norwalk community for many, many years and, and wants to maintain a good relationship with his neighbors. And has said that he will remain available in, in the event it, it doesn't meet anyone's expectations. But given all of the research we've done to date and have presented to you, we think that everything will, will present as expected. There also will not be tournament play here. That's what I was getting at. I said two versus three courts. And Reg and I, last week, we had mentioned to you that we had looked, or last month, that we had looked into three courts. For regulation tournaments, a facility has to have three courts. So there won't be tournament play here, which also eliminates some crowd or crowd noise. There are no bleachers. There, there's really no extra space to, to recreate or watch, watch the players. Really is for the, the players on the court and then transitioning through. And so we represented that to the neighbors as well.
Very good. Marilyn, do you get your answer? Okay, I will ask if there's any member of the public who wishes to speak in favor of this application. Hearing none, I will ask if there are any members of the public that wish to speak against this application.
It looks like there is Jeffrey, George, Billsey, and Ryan who would like to speak. So I will bring them over.
Very good.
If our presenter would take away the presentation so that I can see more of the folks.
Thank you. That's what I was going to ask. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Franklin Pillacy and I signed the letter on behalf of Northwest Association. And I'd like to just state as well on this record that the association is satisfied with the plan as submitted. And the association is in support of the application. And the association is satisfied that this will be a, a good addition and that there will be a good neighbor. So we are again stating our support for the application.
Thank you very much. And once again, I'll ask if there are any parties that wish to speak in opposition of this application. Hearing none, I will give the applicant a, an opportunity to make a last statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have our deck here for you to take a look at. And I think I've said everything that I can say. I promise to try to be brief tonight, so.
Very good. At this point, I will close this section of our public hearing. And as there are no other items on the agenda for our direct approval, I think the board can go into executive session to discuss this item and vote in case we lose one of our members.
Just a couple items. We can't go into executive session.
Oh, I'm calling it the wrong thing, Andy. You're correct.
Additionally, we have some extensions in time that a couple of people asked for. We can deal with it after, after this item. Yep.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm the individual who has the hard stop, as they call it, at nine. So I'm feeling pretty confident we can get through all of this by nine.
So you're saying you don't want to vote at this point?
No, I'm happy to continue.
Well, let's, let's deal with this application now. Any comments from the board?
Yeah, there's, I, I don't know that we have had a hardship presented. The shape of the lot certainly might have been a hardship when we were looking at an initial complaint for the site. At this point, the site's pretty full up and I don't see the hardship, so I won't be voting yes.
Ted, you kind of raised your hand there.
I did. And, you know, I, I actually agree with the argument that this site, the configuration of the site does present a hardship. And if it were even a close call, I think that the applicant has done a good job of responding to the questions of the board. It offers an amenity to the community that is a good use of the site and improved use of the site. And the applicant has been responsive to its neighbors and agreed to the recommendations from the neighbors. And with, with those additional comments in mind, I think that the hardship is present.
Okay. Any other comments from our board? I don't particularly like this application. I think that there are numerous negative aspects to it. But I do have to look at it in that there has been a zone change. That lot configuration does play a part in this. And you know, there is an effort of cooperation with the adjoining property owners to mitigate any potential problems that may rise from this. As we make our, you know, final comments, what I would like to see is a requirement that if we don't have to recommend it or approve it, that the building department approve a 10-foot-high fence, solid fence, subject to all structural requirements for structure of this type. And that any damage to the fence on either side of the property line be rectified immediately. In lieu of a fence, and if additional soundproofing is required, that you know, the planting of Green Giant Arbor Whitey be done to soften the sound generated. So I, I'm going to stand in approval of this against my better judgment. Anybody else wish to weigh in? Marilyn?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Barely, but yes.
Okay, so from what you say and also from what Andy said, is it Andy or Ted? Anyway, I'm in agreement. I mean, I think my big issue was about what the neighbors thought, A. And B, about the noise. They're in a, a section that allows for business. They're in this odd configured, you know, the configuration of the lot. But I'm always about also just knowing what the neighborhood really thinks of this. It seems to be a plus, but I would just be very wary because, as you said, Lee, the, when I watched the video, you know, our business is to uphold rules because they're there for a good reason. This just has a lot of history and odd configurations. But I do think it's a real improvement for the area that, right now, that piece of property was, is being trashed. It could be used for a good purpose, but in my mind, it was only if the neighborhood, the neighbors who were going to be affected by the lighting and the noise, you know, would consider it upbeat, a positive, and they seem to. So I, I, I would like to vote in favor of it. But I also think that your suggestions about the 10-foot wall and noise to me is a real issue. I have an issue with noise. And if the people after the fact have an issue with noise, I think it should be incumbent. And it should be written into it that the owners of intensity have to do something about it. They have to rectify it because no one should be, you know, settled with, saddled with noy, extra noise, because they've allowed something to go out of, out of form right by their house. And I, I, so that's something I would, I would think should go into that allowance.
So, Mr. Chairman, it would seem to me that a, a motion could be made that would approve this with all of the conditions that have been laid out already. And I would only ask if you had additional conditions that I'm getting the sense that there may be that other than, some members of the board might wish to add additional conditions.
Okay, thank you, Keith. Since I made statements about additional conditions other than what have been presented to us, I'll attempt to make the motion that we approve this application subject to the conditions that have been put forward in the letter from the adjoining property owners. However, I would like to subject the, the fence to approval by the building department with keeping the height of the fence at 10 feet and requiring that a structure of that height be subject to structural requirements of the Connecticut State Building Code. And in the possibility of damage to the fence, that the applicant be responsible for repairing the damage as soon as possible. And additionally, should the noise level, level become objectionable subject to the agreement between the owner and the adjacent condominiums, that 12-foot-high Arbor Whitey Green Giant be planted in the vicinity of the fence? Anybody wish to add anything?
Well, but I do want to make a comment before you vote.
Go ahead, Andy.
Is there a second for your motion?
I second it.
Yeah, go ahead. Hey, we have a second.
Motion on the floor, discussion and the discussion that I have, it really has to do with how we normally view this. If somebody wants to use their property and there's some weirdness in the shape of the property or there are other circumstances that prevent them from normal use of their property, we frequently grant a variance. That has been done. They have normal use of the property. They're not being denied use of the property. So I think they need to show true hardship, and I don't think there is a true hardship. When you start looking at ignoring setbacks, there has to be a real good reason to ignore them, but I don't see the good reason. Anyway.
And Andy, as I stated in my opening statement on this, I would agree with you. But I think this provides a benefit that maybe goes beyond the normal requirements of requesting a variance. Any other comments from the board?
Question for you?
Yes.
In planting those trees, if, if that happens, do we need to designate on which side of the fence those trees get planted? Does, is it important? I don't know.
Well, we could state that for the record that.
I'm just saying, I, I don't know if it's important. I just thought maybe I'd.
Well, you know, in thinking about it, to deaden the sound, you really want the trees planted on the north side of the fence, which would be the applicant's property.
Okay.
That will, all you, all we would do by planting Green Giant Arbor Whitey south side of the fence is, it's got very little benefit, at least on the north side. It will directly help deaden the sound.
Okay, so maybe we should include that.
Okay, well, I've already included that.
Okay, good.
Any other comments from the board? Hearing none, I'll ask for a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. We have a vote to approve this application subject to the conditions. As stated. In the letter from the. Actually presented to us by the applicant. And the adjoining property owners and the conditions that we've put on it during this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have the request for extension of time.
Yes. Has everybody looked at them?
I have, yeah.
Yes.
Let's deal with. Four buttonball trail. What's the number on it? Actually, Ms. Sachi. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the ZBA, how are you this evening?
Okay, do you wish to make a comment regarding? Four buttonball trail?
Well, just two things, in addition to the information provided in the extension request itself. I just wanted to update you on where things are as of today. Mr. and Mrs. Mattson are working with Citizens Bank to secure financing. They've submitted all the documentation for the loan, they're waiting the bank's appraisal. And also, they are waiting for the modular building plans for the unit that would be, the structure that would be constructed on site. Those are being prepared by a company out of Wisconsin called PFS. And they are substantially delayed in producing those and sending them to my client and Mr. Di Bartolomeo, who was also on, on the call, the hearing tonight. He is with the, the engineering firm that prepared the engineering plans. So they're doing everything they can, but unfortunately, they're subject to the bank's timetable and also the delay in getting the plans from PFS. So that's the reason that we're before you, they fully intend to move forward, they, they need to move forward. As soon as they do, we'll, we'll apply for the zoning permit and the building permit right away. That's all.
Okay. Any comments on this request for a time extension?
Yeah, I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm not sure, I did provide a staff memo, but I'm not sure if that's protocol to read aloud when it's an extension of time request. I wasn't certain about that.
Hold on, let me see if I have it here. Yes, I do. Does anybody have any objections to or comments on the staff's? Comments on this request for extension? No. Now, I, the only thing I would like to add is that. You know, this board has been reluctant to con- constantly hear applications for extensions from projects. And it's been, in my memory, our recent policy to give one and only one extension. Andy, is that true?
Not quite. We, we look at a goal of doing one extension only, but if there is really unavoidable reason for delay, then we would grant it others.
Okay, then I will not make the recommendation that we do one and only one request. So would somebody like to make a motion?
I will make a move, motion to approve this request for an extension.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye. The request for extension is approved. And on the second request. Ms. Sachi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, members of the ZBA, I'm Liz Sachi, Carmen Torrance. Again, this application was granted in, in. September, October, excuse me, September, the certificate of variance was recorded on the land records. All the documents were submitted to the city zoning staff in February 26th to apply for the zoning permit. But just due to COVID and, and staffing and the amount of applications that the staff is dealing with. We determined it necessary to come before you for an extension. We fully expect to have the zoning permit issued, I would suspect, within, I would imagine, two weeks. And then after that, it would go to the building department and maybe a week or two for the building department to issue its permit. So we're doing all that we can to get the permits issued timely, and I don't see any reason why there would be any delay. Beyond this additional time that we've asked for you into, in maybe a month or so, maybe two months before the building permit will be issued and construction will commence. And the contractor has already been hired, and as soon as a building permit is issued, construction will take about four months to, to complete. So it's the same reason, the same section of the city code, section 1169A, that allows for extensions of time. And it's the likely, largely the same reason.
The specific length of time that you want extended is how much?
I would prefer that the six months be granted, just in case there are any issues that come up in having the building department or the zoning department issue their respective permits. But I don't believe that the six months will be necessary, however, they come at six-month increments, and I prefer that you grant six months if that's okay with you.
Fine.
I move that we extend for a six-month time.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We have approved it.
Thank you very much for your time, have a nice evening.
Thank you, Ms. Sachi.
Thank you.
Okay. I trust that all of you received and have read through the.
Minutes.
The minutes of the last meeting. I have read through them myself and. Found them to be. A relatively accurate. Description of the meeting.
Yeah. They didn't misspell your name, yeah?
No, thank you. Appreciate that. Any other comments from members of the board?
None.
Okay.
None for me.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as submitted.
Or I will vote in favor.
Thank you.
Who seconded?
Somebody seconded, Marilyn.
Marilyn raised her hand.
Okay. That will conclude our meeting this evening. Would somebody like to make a motion that we?
I wanna, I wanna chat with Marilyn for about five minutes, is that okay, Michelle? And you can keep us going for five, just to chat?
Go ahead.
Because we could adjourn.
But. It's gonna be, keep on recording, but that, that, that's, yeah.
I move we adjourn and then leave the session open for a couple of members to chat. That if there's only two of us, we don't have to have a formal meeting.
Andy, do you want me to call you? I can just call you.
No, we can, we can chat, if, if there's multiple of us, then we have a problem with, for you. But if there's just two of us, we're fine.
I will log off.
I will also, and Tammy, thank you for seeing that. We were kept on time by. I have never really been aware of the 12-hour time difference with China until I had an urgent need to talk to one of our suppliers in our business. And now I realize how inconvenient it is to do business.
I will assume you're not in China.
Correct, I am not in China, no.
I used to go with, through this with my parents when they lived in Manila.
Oh, right, of course.
Not quite 12 hours, but.
11, I think.
Yes.
So I will. They're a supplier to us and I, I have to accommodate whatever it is they want, whenever they want to talk, so.
Very good.
Thanks, everybody.
A good evening and see you all next month.
Good night.
Marilyn. If you get a chance, go through some of those cases in the book. The reason I was so hard as nails tonight is I think. The board is starting to move a.